The following program is sponsored by the Greek Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Regional Planning Commission Meeting, September 15th, 2021.
So there'd be a total of five, and having three out of the five would still be a one.
Okay, so we're okay then?
I think so, yeah.
He may be trapped at the pharmacy, I'm sure, so...
I use the term interim quorum, but you have, you can, my understanding was, I didn't get it, the AG's opinion was, as long as you're not purposely structuring that.
Okay.
So if there's no active knowledge, or there's no knowledge of actually structuring the board to avoid the quorum or to create the interim quorum.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we were legally right.
Yes.
It's correct, I'm sure.
Yes.
I'll call his wife real quick and just make sure if, if he can while we can proceed.
If he can join telephonically, if he's got a phone on him, he can join telephonically that way.
Okay, let me find her number.
Hey, April, hey, I'm with the Regional Planning Commission, is Andy coming tonight? Okay, we'll go, well, that's gonna be a little hard to do, so I think we can just do it with what we have here, so. Yeah, I believe legally we will be okay the way we are, okay. No, that's okay, all right, thank you, bye. He is in the middle of coaching soccer right now, in the middle of the field, and so I think apparently he gets it figured out.
That could be a problem, yeah.
So if we can proceed with three people...
I don't think so.
Well, according to our legal counsel...
Yeah, I personally checked with the AG's office, and it was their opinion that you would not count a vacancy when deciding a quorum. And so with one person with one vacancy, that brings us to a total of five, and we have a quorum here, there's a majority.
Okay.
So we do, do legally have a quorum based upon the vacancy?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
I concur.
Okay.
I'd like to see the opinion.
We just have the verbal opinion, George, and you just recorded it?
No, from the AG, I got it from you guys.
You can do that under oath, we're not, we're not supplying you with that.
You're not fine with it, then why are we proceeding?
No, I just said I was, I said, "We're not supplying you with that AG opinion." Supplying.
Okay.
Okay. Let me call it. Calling the meeting to order, and Jason, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Other than verbal, you probably just did.
The pledge?
No, supplying you with the opinion here.
That's your opinion, I accept that, but I want to see it from the AG.
No, I'm stating that, I'm stating that on, on your camera. You can go to the AG and get a written opinion if you want.
Why would I do that when I'm paying for two guys here today?
You're asking for it, I'm not here to argue.
Okay, I'm not arguing either, I'm just making a request.
It feels like you're arguing.
Well, that's because you don't understand me, I'm a lovable guy.
Okay. Okay, this is the September 15th, the Regional Planning Commission, we open with public comments, it will be for all matters, both on and off the agenda, it will be limited to three minutes per person. Commission reserves the right to reduce the time limit, the total time and amount for public comment, comments during discussion, items may not be accepted from the general public, or, Commission may prohibit comments if the content of the comments are willfully disruptive of the meeting by being slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or mounting to personal attacks, or interfering with the likes of other speakers. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing on the agenda items and/or attempt to make comments on the items at the Commission meeting. So we will open up with public comments, limited to three minutes each.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on numerous occasions, August 19th, September 16th, October 21st, then I gave a copy June 23rd to the County Commission in regards to the Planning Commission and the city, today is not addressed, city code violations by previous and present members of the Planning Commission, as well as City Councilman and County Commission. On July 22nd, 2021, I got a letter from you in regards to my request, and I need to be more specific. You guys have a good secretary, you've heard my comments more than once, and you just ignored me. I'm not going to do your homework, if I do, I want to file that complaint against you folks. I have to bring the issue to you, and that's it. My building, my property got tagged with graffiti, I reported it in the past, on Main Street we have a motel, now it is tagged, it's closed, door's been kicked in, graffiti, tractor nuisance, you folks gotta start doing your job. Car on Kenzie, no ADA down the line, that's been going on for years. I've reported in the past, your building inspector, not Mr. Lee here, but the other one is in Eureka, having whatever, not doing his job. Copper Queen parking lot, not properly zoned, commercial, it's residential, I had to pay several hundred dollars to get mine changed, I don't like that. You guys are getting slapped, public officials, and it's not coming back to the rest of us. Mr. Flegas, coaching on city right of way, buildings, tractor nuisance, vehicles unlicensed, and you're sending out notices across the street from where he lives on High Street, five vehicles on the lot just parked up just recently, unlicensed, not all of them, but you can't give out citations to some and not others. Mr. Alworth was in business, no special permit, no special use, moved from one location, moved to another, he's got to pay the same fees as anybody else, he's on the City Council and make the rules. Mr. Spear, same situation, he can do what he wants, but he's got to play the same game as anyone else. Mr. Chairman, on August, excuse me, September 3rd, 2021, I asked for the zoning for several parcels, and all I got was a map, the map is not clear, doesn't show streets, addresses, all that's lacking is a donkey's tail, so I can put a blindfold on and try and find out what the zoning is, you gotta do better than that. When the request is specific, you gotta give a specific answer. We have ordinance against animals in the city limits, it's been years, how much longer do I have to keep telling you that? On June 26th, 1991, I had a memo put out that all corners in the city have to be handicap access. You guys are destroying my property on Seventh NG, you need to address that.
Okay, time's up too long, George, thank you.
I'll be back.
Any more public comment?
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Chairman? Is anyone else? My name's Bryce Kretraff, I am a current resident of Ely, Nevada, I have been my entire life except for a matter of about four years. I'm here today to bring up that we have received a letter in the mail stating that we are in violation and that we need to put a curb and gutter on our property immediately. So, back up a little bit, we brought a house in this spring, to obtain our occupancy permit, it was held over our head by our city inspector that we could not receive our occupancy permit until this letter was signed, that we had to put curb and gutter in within six months. So with that, we cannot financially afford right now to put in a curb and gutter, anywhere from ten to thirty to forty thousand dollars, we live on a corner lot. So what I'm here, what are we, what can we, what can we do with this, where can we take this, and, because I, we physically can't come up with the money to just jump on an investment like that, we would have to get loans, and right now, we're still trying to figure our finances out from buying this new house. And so I'm just curious where we can go with this, and what solutions we have.
So just so I understand this right, so you do an especial home occupation on that pretense that you would get a curb and gutter within six months?
Correct, and I do have a letter here that was signed on November 16th of 2020, and yes, basically, they would withhold our occupancy permit until this letter was signed.
Where are you located?
499 Stevens Avenue.
Where do you live?
499 Stevens Avenue.
Correct.
Okay.
And also, nobody else in our area, there is some newer builds, there was, and nobody else in the area has curb and gutter, you know, if we were to put in a curb and gutter, what's, what's the stipulations, how much curb and gutter would we need to put in, that kind of thing?
Can we, can we answer that legally with the public comment?
You can have a discussion, but, you know, he needs to make it an agenda item.
Correct. To Bryce, I mean, unfortunately, there's not a whole lot like we can do right now, we can investigate this, okay, and that's, but, this is something that, that is beyond what this board can do, this is already written into the, into law, when you, when you build a home or you have a home place, there's certain things that you have to have done to get a home occupancy permit, and again, I don't want to add through this too much, because I will investigate it, and I'll talk to Lee, and we'll go through all that stuff, if you'd like to bring it up as an agenda item, you're welcome to do that, you know, always thank you for bringing this forward to us, but we want you to, we want to try to get you to understand and make everybody aware that when you do build a home, or you bring a home in, there are certain things that have to be done, and unfortunately, there's a lot of expense to some of these things, and it does, it makes it very, very hard, and I, you know, I appreciate you guys bringing in a house and doing all that, I mean, when I built our first house, we could, we were on top ramen for, for a year, because of the expenses that's, that's accrued from that, but you take a chance and you go for it, and there's certain things along the way that unfortunately, you, you have to do to do that.
Right.
And with new construction, or with bringing in houses, these things have to be done.
Okay.
I am not sure, and I'm not in a, a way right now to answer those questions and see if there's something that can be done, maybe prolong that a little longer to give you a, or maybe there's some grants or loans out there, I'm not aware of any of that stuff, but I can certainly talk to Lee, and maybe it might be in your best interest to talk to Lee and see if there's some things that, that can be done.
Right.
Okay, to try to alleviate that, because we certainly don't want you to be discouraged as homeowners in this town, that's definitely something that doesn't want to be done.
Yeah.
But I can totally understand your, I can understand how frustrated you are with that, but on the other side, there is things that do have to be done to be homeowners.
Correct, and to also put on record, we, our house arrived here on August 15th, we weren't notified of putting a curb and gutter in until it was November 15th, when Brad came and told us that we, the bank called us and told us that we needed an occupancy permit, so we got ahold of Brad, he come down, and he said, "I cannot give this to you until you put in a curb and gutter," and that was the first time that I had heard about that. Our house was sitting on the foundation, and it was finished, we were ready to move in, the only thing we had to do was go through escrow. We had, we had talked to Brad on multiple occasions, sorry, I don't mean to use names, but we, we had seen him in person at least twice before we even ordered our house.
Okay, that, I mean, that's definitely something to, you know, get into, and again, I mean, not knowing, we don't start, whole story, I mean, I'll investigate, I'm sure some of the other numbers we'll do too, what's, what's going on. This goes back to some of the points that we've made probably close to a year ago, that I would like to see Lee, if, and maybe, maybe that's already there, maybe the public's not aware of it, but I would love to see a package, a pre-drawn, a package of, okay, thank you for being considered a homeowner, this is the steps that you need to take in order to be a homeowner in this community, and, and this is what you need to do for one. I think we're getting beyond a public comment. Okay, I, I get what your point is, so anyways, if you, if you want to bring it up as an agenda item, do that, I would, I would greatly recommend talking with Lee.
Okay, thank you guys, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry about what you're going to say.
I'm sorry, well, thank you.
Just a gentleman, right?
Really appreciate it.
Okay. Do you have any other public comment?
I didn't finish, can I continue?
No, three minutes were up, they had a discussion, so, anybody else have public comment?
Okay, none, apparent, okay, we go to item A, home occupation agreement for a computer service business applicant is Lloyd Lee, DBA, commission.
Lloyd here?
Yeah. Hi.
Lloyd, can you tell us a little bit about your business, about what you're doing?
Yeah, it's a computer repair, slot service business, setting up various electronics in people's homes, or diagnosing their problems, training involved in, you know, couples who use, using it, purchase gears and electronics and so forth. It'll be handling the customers home, or over the phone.
Okay, could you, could you tell me where whereabouts your home is located at?
I live on Avenue G.
Okay.
It's about two houses down from the desk office.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right by the Family Dollar there.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you, it's a much-needed business, for sure, in town, we're excited to get any businesses in town, and that's definitely something that's needed, so, I don't have a whole lot of questions for it, pretty cut and dry business to do, so, you know, as long as there's not going to be parking issues and things like that, that should be fine.
Yeah, I mean, I may branch out to more services under that umbrella of computers, you know, like bedside, graphic design, stuff like that, but it'll be in the same conditions, I'm working directly with people in their homes over the phone, I won't have, I don't normally have customers come to my house, if that is.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
It's a service that we do need here.
Yeah, so thank you. Yeah, it's pretty cut and dry, I'm, I'm all for it.
Do you want to make that motion?
I will make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. Have a public comment from George?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to speak in favor of this item, the only concern I have is, in looking through the paperwork, that individual doesn't have to have a state business license, yet you've had other people coming for you with home occupations that did have to have a state business license, and I'd like to know what the difference is, I think we should treat all people the same, most people that do business out of their homes are not financially flush, let's say, so if we're going to do that for one, we should do it for all the others, so I'd like to know why, not that I'm against the business set up, but I want everybody treated the same.
Do we have input on that? The packet includes a, a letter or certification of exemption from the state for the business license, based on the letter that we received for the exemption, that, that's what the basis is for the exemption. And is there a...
Is it just because he's a sole proprietor, would that be the reason?
I'm a sole proprietor too.
Yeah, maybe, I don't see the...
Exemption?
It says the entity type, NT7, and the exemption code 003, home-based business, and then gives the Nevada Business Identification Network from the Secretary of State, and that's all I know, unless Leo has more.
It must be the NT7 entity type that...
That has it probably, yeah, so I don't have...
Yeah.
So it would be different if this were, you know, you could see, we'll say, one of the downtown buildings as a business, or...
Yeah, commercial business out of the commercial zone business area as opposed to the home-based business he applied for?
He does have a business ID number, so...
So, my thinking then is that this exemption then removed if he happens to relocate to a formal business location, commercial location?
Not an expert in this area.
It sounds like a combination of things, because you do have home-based businesses where they do require license, sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, you'd have to defer to the...
You'd have to look it up.
You'd have to defer to the state as to why they provided him with the exemption unless...
The code is, sorry, I need to... The code is on, on the form if you want to look it up.
Okay, that's fine, I just want it on record, because we've had numerous home-based businesses, janitorial service, you name it, and they paid, but that's fine, I, I just want everybody treated the same.
Well, that's a good question.
And you should know why the difference is, though.
You mean, they paid the state, they didn't pay us for the exemption, you said they paid?
Yeah.
The state?
The only way they got a license from the city was that they had to show that they had paid the $200 business license from the state, or they didn't get to first base.
Right, so this is a state issue, not the county?
I'm just saying, locally, we need to treat everybody the same, other than that, I'm going to find out what the difference is. I'm worried about the locals here, things are tough enough as it is, that's all.
All right, did we go ahead and approve the, where are we?
We, we made a second, I made a second motion, so we're, we would need to vote to approve.
Okay.
Okay, so we moved, and it's seconded by Jason, under these conditions, let's vote all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes. Okay, and we move on to item B regarding building and zoning codes of the city of Ely and White Lake County. Something that apparently has just come up here. What do you think, Jason?
Well, with the...
Yeah, as far as when we're talking about zoning and usage properties, and apparently the situation where this gentleman was told, okay, you move the house in, but...
Well, I don't know if this, it has to do with, it definitely has to do with the building, for sure, of it, my, my point was before is that it would be nice, if it doesn't already exist, Leo may have, you know, may have an answer for me on that, but if, you know, if we can put a uniform package together for these people, that would show them the step-by-step process of, you know, either I'm going to move a modular home in, or I'm going to build a stick-built home, what is the actual process, so that there's a, there's a uniform flow, and they can go through and actually physically, you know, check off those things and not be surprised at the end by, by, you know, something. And again, I don't know the full story on the previous gentleman, but...
Lee Walker Building Official, yeah, I don't know his specific, but it is in the Ely City Code that when you are building a new, when it's new construction, you're building new residents, you, you have up to six months, I believe, to put curb and gutter in.
Correct.
It is written in our code to do so.
Yeah, and I understand that, but I think a lot of people, you know...
Just like an easy checklist.
Yeah, aren't aware that, you know, a lot, a lot of people, like maybe the couple was there, and was like, "Oh, I want to put a home on a lot, okay, no big deal, I'm going to order the home, and it's going to come, and everything's going to be okay," and I think that the public, there, there's a lot of that, we mentioned before, you know, coming up and advertising it or something and say, "Listen, are you looking to build a home, are you looking to put a modular on property, you know, before you do that, please come by and get a pamphlet showing the actual process that needs to be done to do this, so that there's not headaches, and there's not the financial worries of forty thousand or whatever it is down the road?"
Yeah, I agree, and I, we do actually have a such packet, I don't know if it actually states on there whether they have to put curb and gutter on there, I can look into that, but we do have a City of Ely Building Permit Requirement Packages, what, you know, when you're obtaining a building permit, this is the step-by-step, I actually have a packet, but I don't know if it states in there whether, you know, the curb and gutter...
Yeah, I mean, obviously, those kind of expenses are, are a fair amount of money, and I think that, you know, to be proactive in our board, or proactive in the city or the county or whatever, to give as much information to those people as possible, to make them aware of what they have coming up, you know, that, so they're not set with this, the shock at the end that, "Yeah, I'm not getting this, I'm not getting this permit because I didn't know we had to put in this curb and gutter," you know, and, and we know, we know that it's there, you know, but there's a lot of people that aren't ed, I shouldn't say educated, but aware of the, of the steps and the hidden costs, I guess, if you will, of building a home or putting on something on real property.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I'm just trying to be as, try as forthcoming as the public as I can to make them educated, you know, these are, these are life-changing experiences, you know, and they come up with that much money, and I, I hate to have people, again, a lot of it falls on people not going out and researching it enough, but I hate to have, you know, young people's dreams squashed right off the beginning, and, you know, in debt on something that they had permitted earlier.
And the city code, or any building code, it could be intimidating, you know, and so basically taking that and then putting it in a simplified version.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I feel like we could definitely add that to our list of what we have already, we can make new sheets for that, and issue them when they're going to build a new home, and state that, okay, yeah, you have up to six months, you know, to get your curb and gutter done, and you go through the city engineer, he'll tell you what you need, the specifications, because he's the one that has to sign off on it.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I think that as much transparency as possible, I don't want to drag this on forever, but, you know, George is well aware, when I built my house, I had my issues with a setback log that I was not aware of on my backside of my house, well, that came into effect later on, they put a stop order on my house because my thing encroached, had no clue about it, talked to the city inspector many, many times about that, never was mentioned about a backyard setback, so, you know, those kind of things should be put in place, and, you know, it could have been a big, huge financial thing for me, if, if I wouldn't have got it taken care of right away, so...
Yeah, yeah, usually when people come in to the office and they ask, you know, "What is, what do we need to do here?"
Can I ask for a special favor, please, this is the hospital, and they would not be called in unless it was an emergency, so can I step out for just five minutes, please?
Do we pause then?
I would, just take it for a second.
Okay, we'll take a few minutes to pause here.
Oh, I thought this meeting would be short.
Still actually a little under the guest.
You just never know.
And we're back.
Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, most times when somebody comes into my office, I'll give them that building permit package that we have. Give them all the necessary paperwork. Depending on whether they're in the county or the city, I have, uh, kind of to both. Whatever, if you're doing a new home residence, it has all the setback information for the county and for the city. Like secondary structures, you know, patios, I mean, everything you need, it's all on that. I'll usually give that to them or they might get very, very useful.
Okay, I, I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have on that agenda item.
Okay. And anything else for, uh, item B? Okay, let's move on to, uh, item C, approval of minutes from the committee on planning commission on the August 18th.
So I, that might have worked as an emergency here, but, um, I didn't see anything.
Yeah, I went through it and went through it a little while ago too. I didn't see anything either.
So I, did, did you see?
No.
Okay, so I'll move to approve that.
I'm not seconded.
Okay, a motion to approve from Jason and second from Leo. All those in favor, say aye.
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 It is approved. We shall move on to public comment again. I have to be limited to three minutes and, uh, the mic is open.
I didn't want to put in. Are you going first?
No. It's public comment.
Okay. Thank you. As I was saying, Mr. Chairman, my memo dated, uh, June 26th, 1991, when I was mayor, all corners have to be handicap access. We have a state project going in and you don't comply. Once you access that corner, you should be turn, able to turn left or right. Cannot do that. I've said in the past, the biggest detriment we have with this city and county is the building inspector, not Lee. Uh, Lee and I have our differences, but he hasn't done what the other guy has. In talking to Bryce's parents, his project was a nightmare, what he went through for that home. He didn't tell you everything. He either talked to his parents or get him off the side and see what Brad did to him and cost him 20, 30, 40,000 dollars over and above. That's wrong. I, uh, patrol that area. There's other RVs, not RVs, RV is another issue, but modulators have been put in. Been in there for 10 years, 20 years, 30. No curb and gutter. The only one that's remained in the city council is myself and that isn't happening. And now you're putting this young man up against the blade. He needs time. Across the street of 488 Stevens Avenue from Bryce, uh, a Hispanic man is doing some construction. I'm gonna do a little more research, but they just put in probably a 75 to 100-foot of curb and gutter. Unfortunately, it's not straight and some of it appears to be six inches below grade. Below grade, below the street. Can't do that. I don't know who engineered that, but the city engineer by code has to flag that item. We need to find out. Those people paid a lot of money. This young man is looking at the same thing. The last thing he needs is to put a roller coaster, uh, also. Mr. Chairman, I've asked in the past in regards to the application for 910 Altman Street, which has crossed the street. No record of a permit. No record of a permit. I went 30 different times up the city hall to get a permit before I ever got one. 1200, Hampton Street, you've got three homes there. No permit. And, uh, what should I say? Uh, attractive nuisance, and yet they're coming after me, in particular, the city council. I cleaned up a mess that I had and yet it's not good enough. Before you go any farther or the city goes any farther, they better look long and hard at those people. Selective enforcement is killing this community and it's gotta stop. And the complaints I made now, I'm gonna come after you guys because you can put a stop to it and I haven't seen you do anything, John. How long you been on the planning commission? Let me go back a little bit, uh, August 20th, September 20th. The new dispensary still doesn't meet ADA and you're going after this government.
Okay, wrapped up.
You got all those regulations enforcement will give out a permit.
Any other fellow comments? Okay, done the hearing. I shall entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will give that motion.
Okay, motion is made to adjourn, Jason.
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned.
Thank you for making it, Jason. Right here, final.
Just, just made it. Okay. You did.
What is the, um, if someone resigns, are we gonna have like, I mean, the town's advertising? Just curious, someone just needs to be recruited.
Are you switched off?
This has been a Georgetown production. George Chatchis reporting.